Call to order, the regularly scheduled meeting for Bristol, Virginia City Council, October 22nd, 2019. Please join me in a moment in silent prayer. All right, I had to pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Mayor Osborne had a personal matter to deal with and couldn't be here this evening, so I'll take over the meeting. And since I don't have any comments, but any council comments?
It's just been brought to my attention, we need to table item number six due to Ms. Prent.
Just, we can just do that when we get to it, right?
You can do that. Yeah, just do it. That's fine. We can do it when we get to it.
Okay.
All right, sorry.
Oh, that's no problem. Thank you. All right, city manager, comment?
I don't have any comments tonight.
Okay, matters to be presented by members of the public, non-agenda item. Let's see, non-agenda, looks like Ms. Marnie? I think you're the only one that signed up for non-agenda.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, my name is Nancy Marnie. I'm a resident of the city of Bristol, Virginia. I'm a property owner. Gentlemen, on October the 4th, 2019, according to the records in the Chief Financial Office, the bonded debt, bonded debt of the city of Bristol, Virginia is $106,770,000. This pays off on June 3rd, 2043, which is 24 years from now. That means if we do not borrow one penny from tonight forward, we still owe that money. That's a lot of money, fellas. In the meantime, since the last meeting, I've talked with an awful lot of people, they've talked with me. The city of Bristol, Virginia is continuing to be on a very dangerous financial slippery slope. That's it in a nutshell. We're on a dangerous financial slippery slope. Now, it is my understanding that this city has given approximately $700,000 tax deferral, or whatever the proper name would be, for two pizza restaurants, one of which doesn't even have a piece of property yet to build on. Is this correct? A yes or no is fine.
That is correct.
That is correct. All right, secondly, 700, secondly, it is my understanding that the city is preparing to take a $300,000 to $400,000 loan out of the reserve fund to pay off something up at the Rock, uh, the Falls development. Is that correct? That would be around the 1st of November sometime, 300,000 to 400,000 out of the reserve fund. Is that correct?
We're unaware of any, no, I don't know where that's coming from.
Are we going to take anything out of the reserve fund sometime the 1st of November to pay anything up there?
I will just add that those reserve funds can only be released by council. The $1.4 million emergency reserve can only be released by a supermajority vote of council.
She may be referring to some leftover bond money that had to be spent. I remember hearing something about that several months.
I don't know what it is, I'm asking the question.
I think that was some leftover bond.
There is leftover bond money that has to be spent prior to November 1.
Can we have an answer to that next time, maybe?
I think that wasn't, there is money.
You think that's it?
Yeah, but that...
Can I go with that?
I can tell you right now, there's not 311,000.
300,000 to 400,000.
There's not 400,000, it's less than that. It's...
Yes, and those funds have been appropriating and will be expended in the timeline. There's not a payment for anything up at the Falls.
All right. All right. Now, in my opinion, and I'm a citizen, I think my opinion's about as good as anybody else's because I have a 40-year track record. Check it out. Check it out, it's there. In my opinion, if this council starts making financial commitments into the future, it is fiscally irresponsible. We are in no position to do that for anybody. It is my opinion that we got gut punched at the last meeting by that brewery. In my opinion, we were financially gut punched by the brewery at the last meeting. Now, gentlemen, I'm trying to hurry, but I've just got more, more to say than three minutes will hold.
Try to re-briege Ms. Marnie.
I will do so, thank you, sir. I think it is fiscally irresponsible to even consider making any kind of a financial commitment to anybody from this point forth. We have enough on our plate to keep us busy, to pay for, for at least 24 years, and it'll go longer than that. We've got a jail that's costing, gonna cost us a gazillion dollars. You could vanish in some of the potholes in the streets. I mean, we can go on and on, folks. Please do not be fiscally irresponsible. Now, the previous, I'll end with this. The previous council established through hard work, blood and sweat and tears, they established a course of action and a pathway that can be followed to help us get back on track again. What this council needs to do is to be a good steward of what has already been put into place and it works. But if you start messing around with it and going off on tangents and giving any more stupid money like this $700,000, I think it's shameful. I think that is absolutely shameful. I just do. I become irrational, it's shameful. Now, stay the course, gentlemen, I urge you. I was there when all those discussions went on with the previous council. I was in this room with them, I know what it was, and it was painful for them and for everybody else. Please, gentlemen, stay the course that has been set for you. It works, don't mess with it. Thank you for the extra time, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Marnie. All right, no one else that's signed up? So we'll move to the regular agenda. The first item is a presentation from Bristol's Promise. I think Melissa Roberts, Program Coordinator of Bristol Promise, is here.
Yes, sir. So thank you, gentlemen, for having me here tonight and for giving me the opportunity to speak with you. And I also want to thank you for the proclamation with the Bristol, Tennessee City Council that you did earlier this month. This all ties together. So tonight I want to talk to you quickly about the role of life experiences in shaping brain development. We know that this needs to be turned on. There we go. We know that healthy child development is the foundation for educational achievement, for economic productivity, for responsible citizenship and lifelong health. When those foundations and pillars are built strong, we set up the next generation for successful parenting, and ultimately that leads to stronger communities and a healthy economy because we're able to reallocate our funds to other things and not have to fix that foundation of child development. And so just as when you're building a house, as some of you have experienced with, you have to build a strong foundation. Child brain development is no different. If you build a strong foundation, then that sets the child up for success later in life. But if you build a fragile foundation, then it leads to development and behavior issues later on in life. And so, just like with anything, it's costly, it's less expensive and better to get things right the first time than to try and go back and fix them later. So brain architecture is built through serve and return interaction. So when young children reach out and they babble and they coo and they point at things, that's them serving. The adults around them return that by naming things or talking back with them, and that's how we build strong brain architecture. So that serve and return is incredibly important to reinforce that brain architecture. But children do experience stress, and not all stress is bad. We have positive stress, which are things like preparing for tests, getting your immunizations, and what that does is it prepares the child's brain and body to deal with situations later in life. And then we have tolerable stress, and these are tragic and oftentimes unavoidable events, the death of a loved one, natural disasters, and they're not good for brain development or body development. But if we surround that child with supportive adults, then we can mitigate those outcomes and make it not a long-lasting issue for the children. Toxic stress is where we really get to the heart of the matter, and these are ongoing repeated exposures to abuse or neglect that are bad for brain development. And if that child doesn't have supportive adults around them to help mitigate that, then those stress hormones will interrupt that brain development, and this can lead to lifelong physical and mental health problems that include addiction. And as you know, we're facing an opioid epidemic in our region, part of which is from toxic stress. So what helps us manage stress? We can think about our executive functioning as air traffic control. So just like a busy airport, you have all the planes that are taking off and landing, and it's that, that air traffic control system's job to make sure that all of that happens without any of the planes crashing. And that executive functioning is very much the same thing with children. So they have to, you know, get all of these incomes of information and make decisions and, and make plans, and so it's important for us to do that serve and return to build those strong brain functions because it's a key biological foundation for school readiness and also for outcomes in health and employability as adults. So there are more sensitive periods for brain development. It is easier to build a child's brain from ages birth to five, and then again around age 15, for those of you who have teenagers, keep that in mind. But please know that it is never too late to build that executive functioning, and what that does is it helps us to self-regulate. So, now let's talk a little bit about how that neural development can be dysregulated. And we're gonna talk about the ACEs study and ACEs in general. So in the late 90s, there were two doctors, one from the CDC and one from Kaiser Permanente Health Systems, who started looking at adverse childhood experiences. And they outlined 10 different experiences that a child may experience before the age of 18 that can disrupt that development. And ACEs can have lasting effects on things like health, diabetes, suicide attempts, heart disease, broken bones, behaviors such as smoking and drug use, life potential and lost time from work. And we realize that they have a graded dose response, and what that basically means is that the more ACEs a person has, the more at risk they are of those lifelong negative health and wellness outcomes. So you can see on the slide, a person with a zero ACE score is at a pretty low risk for those negative health and well-being outcomes. But as we go down that scale and as we add ACEs to it and you get to five, there is a much higher risk for those negative health and well-being outcomes. And I will tell you, what they found was that somebody with an ACE score of six or more is at a higher risk of dying 20 years earlier than someone with no ACE score. So these are real impactful health outcomes. Now, the other thing is, I have looked for Virginia data, and Virginia is just now starting to discuss ACEs. So there's no aggregate data available. I've talked to Mount Rogers, I've talked to the Health Department, but what they are finding in their early data is that it's very, very similar to Tennessee. So when I show you these Tennessee numbers, please know that the Virginia numbers are very similar. Now, there are 40, over 40 negative outcomes that have been identified through that original ACEs study and subsequent studies, and this is a chart of the number of ACEs experienced before age 18 by adult Tennesseans. 39% of the state has an ACE score of zero, but once you get to that three and four ACEs, one in four Tennesseans has an ACE score of three or more. And so you can see how that starts to pile up, and we talk about that graded dose response. And we know that these numbers are incredibly conservative because these were done by a phone poll, and so they were cold calls. Somebody called your house and said, hey, let's talk about your adverse childhood experiences. Not everybody wants to talk about that with a stranger. In addition, our homeless population was not reached because they oftentimes don't have phones, and we know that homeless populations are at a much higher risk for high ACE scores than non-homeless populations. And also, our incarcerated population was not included in this data, and 61% of incarcerated individuals have an ACE score of four or more. So we know that these are very low estimates. So the ACEs study that we talked about has been expanded. The original ACEs that they found are on that left side, under conventional ACEs, physical, emotional, sexual abuse, emotional and physical neglect, and household dysfunction. But the problem that people saw with that is that the people who participated in that, and there were over 17,000 people that participated, they were largely white, they were largely middle and upper-middle income, and they all had health insurance because they were Kaiser Permanente Health members. So the Philadelphia ACEs study said, maybe we can expand on this. And they expanded the socioeconomic and racial data on this, and they found that expanded ACEs are witnessing violence, living in an unsafe neighborhood, experiencing racism, living in foster care and experiencing bullying, all have the same impact on children later on in life. And we can look at this and say, well, there are lots of things that affect children, but what we need to understand is everything that's made it to these two lists have gone through rigorous scientific testing and validation. So there may be things that, that are added later on as we continue these studies, but these have all been validated through science. So we're gonna pivot and talk about how we can foster resilience, which mitigates the impact of... What we build resilience is through providing safe, stable, and nurturing environments for our children. We know that children can survive without having all three of these, but we really want our children to thrive, and in order for that to happen, they have to have safe, stable, nurturing environments. But our spending doesn't reflect that, and I know Ms. Marnie is always talking about spending, and as a country, you can see that we have to move that needle. So the brain's capacity for change is that red line, and you can see how it becomes less easy to change a brain as the child gets older. There is never a time that it's too late, notice that it does not bottom out, so we can always do this, but it just costs more later on. And so you can see that the spending on programs to change the brain doesn't really kick in until after that most malleable period of a child's life. So the focus has to shift from remediation to primary prevention. These are the national costs of ACEs, as given by the CDC. So ACEs cost us $83.5 billion in productivity loss every year, $25 billion in healthcare, special education $4.6 billion cost, child welfare $4.4 billion. In our criminal justice system, we spend $3.9 billion that has a direct correlation to ACEs. Now, what can be done across a lifespan? These are some of the recommendations from the CDC. Adopt a trauma-informed school policies and practices, and I have to say that both Bristol, Virginia schools and Bristol, Tennessee schools are doing an excellent job of doing that. They're taking this seriously and starting to, to really ramp up their trauma-responsive school practices. But also things like access to high-quality, affordable child and pre-K care. If we know that these are the most malleable time in a child's life, we have to make that available to everybody. And then business and organizational policies that support working parents and allow them to be parents so that they can foster that strong brain development. We also need access to mental health and substance abuse treatment and sufficient income support for low-income families. So you can see all of these, but there are so many more things we can do that can help mitigate the impact of ACEs across somebody's lifespan. But we do need to take a public health approach. This is the same approach that was used in, bless you, in smoking cessation programs back in the 80s and 90s, and you see how much impact that had. And it starts with changing our philosophy and our approach. So personally, we have to change our mental model and stop saying things like, ah, just pull yourself up by your bootstraps, because science tells us that that's not always possible to do. Once we change that philosophy and approach, we can start forming policies and funding and spending our money in smarter ways that are more impactful for every dollar. That leads to programs and services that support this, and ultimately to professional practices, but we want the same message and the same agenda across all of these sectors. So we want businesses and corporations to be saying and doing the same things that faith-based communities are, the same things that philanthropists are doing. And at the end of the day, what we need to do is change our mental model and shift our minds and stop saying what's wrong with you, and we've all done it. When somebody shows up and has ACEs-related behavior, we're like, what's wrong with you? And we need to start saying what happened to you, because that puts us in a more productive mindset to allow us to address these. For further information, we have a training coming up this Thursday at 2:00 PM. You all are all invited to attend. Becky Haas will be talking more in depth about this, but you can also visit the CDC website. Gentlemen, thank you for your time, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Anybody have any questions, comment?
No questions, but just thank you for, thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, item number two, a proclamation recognizing People Incorporated. Staff report?
Counsel, it appears we can just go right into the reading of the resolution, if that's okay.
Do you want to read it? That'd be fun.
Your choice. I'll read. Whereas People Incorporated, Virginia was founded on August 4th, 1964, and whereas People Incorporated, a private nonprofit community action partnership, has dedicated 55 years to innovative and compassionate service to the citizens and communities of Virginia, and whereas People Incorporated is a designated community action agency of Bristol, Virginia, and whereas People Incorporated is widely regarded as one of the most innovative and successful community action partnerships in the nation, last year providing human development and community development services to 7,720 individuals and 4,478 families across the Commonwealth. And whereas People Incorporated's founders recognize that people, no matter their circumstances, have hopes and dreams for themselves, their families, and their communities. And whereas the board of directors and staff of People Incorporated remain true to this core principle and demonstrate excellence in providing opportunities for economically disadvantaged people to reach their goals, to enhance their lives, their families, and their communities. And whereas the city council cares about all the citizens of Bristol, Virginia, including economically disadvantaged people, now therefore be it resolved that the city council of Bristol, Virginia hereby commends People Incorporated on the occasion of its 55th anniversary, and be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be prepared for presentation to Robert G. Goldsmith, President and CEO of People Incorporated, as an expression of the city council's recognition and admiration of People Incorporated's tireless work on behalf of the citizens and communities of the Commonwealth of Virginia, adopted this 22nd day of October, 2019.
Do I have a motion?
I move that we accept the proclamation.
Second.
Have a motion by Councilman Farnham, second by Councilman Mumpower. Clerk, please call the roll.
Farnham.
Yes.
Mumpower.
Yes.
Wingard.
Yes.
Hartley.
Yes.
All right, Mr. Goldsmith, if you want to come up, I'll present you a copy and you stay up for the next item.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Hartley. Thank you, members of city council. It's an honor to be here, and we appreciate your recognition of our organization and of the work that we've done with you and with your predecessors on city council. We are most effective where we have strong partnerships with local government, and our partnership with Bristol goes back to the beginning. We serve 16 counties and cities in Virginia today. Originally, we served one county and one city, and Bristol was that city. So in terms of our experience and our allegiances and our history, it's Bristol, Virginia. Thank you for this, it means a lot.
We appreciate all that People Incorporated does for not just the city of Bristol, but our region, and really now throughout the Commonwealth. I think you all have offices all the way up in Northern Virginia now, so you've really expanded your reach, so...
Thank you very much. We do have office in Woodstock in the Shandau Valley, and Culpeper in Northern Piedmont, and in Manassas, Greater Pennsylvania area, so we stay on the road a lot.
All right, well, we'll move, just go ahead and move to the next item on the agenda then, which is the annual report from People Incorporated. So if you want to present the report, Mr. Goldsmith?
Thank you very much. I would like to do that. You have at your station a copy of People Incorporated's most, most recent annual report. This is for the period that ended June 30th, 2018. During that period of time, People Incorporated had an economic impact in the city of Bristol, Virginia of over $1.5 million. We served 1,076 individuals during that 12-month period of time, providing a wide range of human development services, small business development, community development services to enable economically disadvantaged people to reach their goals, to enhance their lives, their families, and their communities. We worked with 31 ex-offenders that year. None of those had no recidivating event for six months. We worked with them for six months, so some of those 31, we'd worked with for less than six months of that year. Some we have a hard time keeping in touch with, that's a population that's pretty mobile. We provided home visiting services to improve health outcomes for 54 children and their families. The presentation that you just heard is, is a great kind of lead-in to what we do. We try and do a lot of the things that was being advocated for in terms of... Our home visiting staff that provide the health services are all trained in ACEs. They are all very aware of the impact of adverse child experiences and work with a lot of families who've had those experiences. We provided services to assist 33 abused and neglected children to... The goal is for them to achieve safe, permanent homes, and some of those that total, we had not completed our program yet, but that's the outcome for those children is that they move into or stay in safe and permanent homes. We provided college preparation to three of your high school students. That number seemed low to me, and I didn't have time to get a check on it, but we work with kids who are in high school, who are in junior or senior year of high school generally, who come from families where no one's gone to college in the past. school generally, who come from families where no one's gone to college in the past, and we work with them to help them prepare for college. We help them get scholastic aptitude test fee waivers. We take them on college campus visits. We do a whole series of workshops for them after school hours. We worked with 105 children and their families through Head Start and early Head Start, providing comprehensive early childhood development and family development for children zero to five years old. So we're working with them sometimes for many years to help them be prepared to enter public schools on par with other children who will be going into public schools. Our volunteers provided free income tax preparation to 375 individuals in Bristol during that year. We provided homeownership counseling and housing counseling to 73 households in Bristol during that year. Eleven became first-time homeowners, and eleven also developed sustainable budgets. We weatherized five homes in Bristol. We provided assistance to 24 homes that were homeless or at risk of homelessness. Thirteen obtained safe, affordable housing, and 12 avoided eviction that year. We provided permanent supportive housing to 14 chronically homeless men at our Kings Mountain supportive housing facility. Provided business training to six people who wanted to start or expand a new business and made a loan to one of those individuals, which ended up creating three jobs. We provided 11 personal loans during the year, and nine of those were for personal transportation, car loans. And then we worked with six dislocated workers, helping them get job skills, and 11 adults were assisted in obtaining job skills and finding employment during that year. So wide range of services, all geared toward helping people reach their goals to improve their lives, get better jobs, get better housing, and be or become more productive members of society. So you've got a copy of our agency-wide annual report. We served over 7,000 people, had revenues of about $18 million during the course of the year. Provided the services that we provide here in Bristol. There are a couple that we provide other places that we don't do here, like domestic violence when someone else is providing the service here. You also have a copy of our brand-new five-year strategic plan. It's not something that in the past I would have gone around and given out and said, "Look at this." But we put a tremendous amount of work into the strategic plan. Our board members, our volunteer board members, put about four days of work into the plan, and four days for a volunteer is a lot of time. So we're really proud of this plan. We think it lays a great roadmap for us for the next five years. We, our first goal is a community-level goal, to do community-level work to see that the community can provide the kind of support and infrastructure needed by families and individuals to develop and to thrive. Our second goal is an individual service goal, to make sure that we provide the best quality of services to individuals that are responsive to the needs that they come to us with. We have, within the last couple of years, implemented a new system where when someone walks in the door and says, "I want service A or B," we assess all their needs. We sit down with them and help them figure out the range of things that they're eligible for and that they would need, because we believe that bundling services and addressing more than one need that a person or a family has increases the chances of the family succeeding, and particularly the children in the family succeeding. As a matter of fact, just two days ago, we submitted an application to the state to pilot a program called The Whole Family Approach, where we would be assessing all of the needs of every member in the family and creating a development plan for every member of that family. It's a brand-new concept, originally developed by the Aspen Institute and Kellogg Foundation, Babcock Foundation, that is now going to be piloted in Virginia. We're hoping to do that in two localities. Bristol, Virginia would be one of those. We, our third goal is an advocacy goal. We want to work with groups like you, groups like state legislators, to get some changes made that can have an impact on more than one individual or family at a time. We do most of our work one person at a time, some small communities, but this would be something that would have a broader impact, we believe. The next one's an internal goal, to make sure that our internal processes are strong and effective and that we run the tightest ship that we can. The next, the fifth goal is to ensure that our management implementation is responsible to the community. Doesn't matter how good we are, if we're not responding to what the community needs, then we're not going to achieve our goal. And then finally, to build our board's expertise. Staff come and go during this five-year period of time. I'm going to go, but the board will be the constant, and so we're, we've really been concentrating on board development and plan to continue to do that over the next five years. So that's our strategic plan. To me, one of the more valuable things from these presentations is that sometimes I'll come away from them with ideas of things that we would, could, or should do in that locality. And so I'm, I've been talking now and asking if you've got projects, initiatives, activities that you'd like to see us do in Bristol that we're not doing, or things that you'd like to see us not do that we are doing. But we have come up with some initiatives that are really significant because of that kind of thing. I recall, Mr. Mumpower, when you were on our board, we discussed an idea that you were interested in in terms of an initiative to prepare people for trades kind of jobs and businesses. We've done some work, hadn't hit funding source yet, but we're looking into that. So I'd welcome any kind of input, feedback, suggestions, direction, as part of us wanting to be responsive to the communities that we serve.
Well, I'll say, you know, Mr. Goldsmith and the staff that he has, I mean, it's phenomenal what they do. And until I was on the board, I had no idea everything that Peoples Inc. actually did, and it was pretty incredible, actually, because it touches a lot of different areas of the community. So as you really think about it, and you think about what we've got as big problems that we face, that's the ideas that we're going to be talking about, that you could help us with. And when you look through your annual report, you obviously see where you're trying to help inmates and people that have been in prison, you know, get back in the community, and that's something I know Randy and the sheriff and people have been working on. So I think you'd be a big part of that team, because it seems to have, I'm going to say, stalled a little bit, but it takes a lot of perseverance. It takes a lot of entities to get together to help push that through. So the idea was, what can we do to the low-risk people in the city jail to get them retrained? And then we do have training programs out there. We've got stuff at the Center of Excellence, we got the school system, adult education. So there's a lot of training programs. So how can we connect the dots, get them trained, get them certified, then take their new resume and their new training to all the businesses, because businesses are having a really hard time now finding qualified people. That's a fact. And say, "Look, who we've got. We've screened them. The sheriff department has looked at these folks. We've trained them. They're certified." And then, are they ready to go to work? So I think if you do that right, you could have a big impact on speeding up, getting these folks out of the jail, and getting them back to work, right? So I think that's a big initiative that you could help with, for sure.
Certainly would like to do that. I'll reach out to Mr. Eads and see what we can do to move that along. One thing that I've learned is that the only thing that happens that's significant is a result of partnerships and a lot of different people working together. I know there's a group here in Bristol working on a day shelter, and we're involved in that effort. I'd like to be more involved in the effort to work with ex-offenders. Transitions are a difficult time in life. That's when people fall through the cracks. That's when people get in trouble often, and so if we can help people transition back into society from jail or from prison, it has a high likelihood of having an impact. It's a high-risk group, but with support, people do succeed.
And then the second one, which we had talked about, was, you know, we've got the community colleges, we got the high schools. Years ago, the high schools, for whatever reason, decided to get out of the trade school. You know, we basically don't do that anymore. And so there's a real gap right now in the workforce of folks between, you know, the unskilled high school, not graduated yet, and the employable, highly-trade-skilled, and the what industry needs. So there's this huge hole, right? And so you see things popping up that's trying to fill that gap, like STEM programs popping up. You see the Center of Excellence that was approved by the Tobacco Commission's trying to fill that gap, right, of machining, welding, skill sets. That's, so there's still a huge gap there. So we don't really have a, we don't have a media. We don't have a place where these folks that are very intelligent, very creative, can go and get the skills they need that are real applicable to industry, and having a mentor program around them to help them get the skills that are really necessary to be successful, and then hold their hand to a job. You know, it's still, it's just kind of dysfunctional. There's lots of places you can go get stuff, but there's kind of not one little, you know, core that kind of does that, you know, from A to Z. So maybe that's something that you can help with.
I'd like to.
Because I would like to see in the city, we have a center called the Incredible Entrepreneurship to Jobs Center, right, where all these folks that are really smart that never have a chance, they just need a chance to succeed, they need a chance to see what it looks like to get in business for yourself. If they got carpentry skills, okay, come on. We'll teach you how to be a carpenter. We'll teach you everything about running a business, because you might know how to build a house, but if you don't know the business side, you might go out of business before you get a chance to build the first house, right? So we've got to have a place that teaches folks how to do that, because we could put all kinds of folks to, into the employment community, if we could just take what they know and what they're good at, and teach them what they don't know, and let them loose, and just let them do it. And be there, be there if they stumble to help keep them moving, right? And we just don't do that. We just kind of, they graduate high school, we're kind of done with them, right? Graduate community college, we're kind of done with them. You know, we don't, we don't take that an extra step.
That's a great idea. I agree.
So that's my two ideas.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Anybody?
I just wanted to say, I think there's definitely a big need for the services that you all provide. I think these numbers speak for themselves about how many folks you've helped here in Bristol, and it's the case, a lot of times where it could be, if you all weren't here to help and provide what you do provide, who else would? And in a lot of cases, there may not be anyone else. So I know, Mr. Goldsmith, you're a busy person, you have been your whole career, and we appreciate all the work you've done helping folks here in Bristol.
Thank you, Mr. Gold. Appreciate it.
And I'll just echo all that. I mean, listening to this, having served for a while on the board as well, there's a lot of different things People Incorporated does, and I don't think people realize just how much you do, but it all works to the same goal. Only thing I would add is, is you think through and you're planning and stuff, you know, which things are you best enabled to do for the community? Because there's a lot of people out there trying to do the similar things. Maybe you would be better served to use your resources in an area where you have the expertise and skill, and to let something else go and funnel your resources where it could be best served.
Yeah. Unfortunately, we have to do that.
Yeah. So that's about the only thing, is to always think of that, because sometimes it does seem like there's a lot, duplication of certain programs. But you do a great job, and I was glad to hear how you're kind of wrapping all these programs together to make them holistic and not just stand side by side.
Thank you. That's our goal.
All right. Well, thank you again, Mr. Goldsmith.
Thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
All right. Move to item number four, a public hearing on the sale of city-owned property, Clear Creek Lot, E23. At this time, I'll open the public hearing. Staff comment?
This is a lot on Pebble Beach Drive in Clear Creek Golf Community. It's the first lot on the right. You can see here, here's an overhead shot of it. It's .7 acres, and directly to, I think, the northwest, there is a portion of a lot that is owned by the city, and that'll be important here in just a second. Here's the partial information, if you can read it. It's tax assessed at $45,000, and then we received an offer of $14,000, closing set for November 18th of 2019. The city will allow the buyers to clear shrubs and small trees on Lot 121-C-1-Reserve, which is highlighted there, and that's what I was talking about a few moments ago. I believe the buyers want to kind of clear some of those shrubs and trees out. They do not want to clear-cut, based on the conversations I've had with Tim Carter. They just want to clear it out so they can have a better view of the lake and of the golf course. We sent this offer to counsel on October 4th. I haven't received any comments, either pro or con, in regards to this offer since that time, so we brought it forward for the public hearing tonight.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Eads. We had one person to sign up for the public hearing, Mr. Stephen Steny. Am I pronouncing it right?
Yes. Good evening. My name's Steve Steny, and I'm the person that put the offer in on Lot E23. And the reason my offer came in, what it did was, I had two different people actually come in and look at the property for me to, one, assess the number of trees and the shrubs. It's heavily dense with trees and shrubs on it. So I had two different people come in and give me a price on what it would cost for both tree removal and undergrowth removal, so that you could get a home site in there. And then, secondly, I had my builder take a look at the lot to see what he thought as far as how the land laid. It had, it has a slope to the property, and his comment that it would probably require additional grading for a home site, as opposed to if it was a level lot where you could just go in and do a one-level home, rather than have to go in and do grading for your footers, for the basement area. So this additional cost, once the property repurchased, is going to be somewhere between $8,000 and $10,000, once I, if I was able to purchase the lot. So I just wanted to come in and give my comments and thank the counsel for giving me a chance to at least give you an idea of where I was at with my offer, so.
All right. Thank you. That was the only person that signed up. Is there anyone else that wants to speak? All right. At this time, I'll close the public hearing. Move to item number five, resolution endorsing transportation alternative Move to item number five, Resolution Endorsing Transportation Alternatives Project, Lee Highway Shared Use Path, Phase Two. Staff report. Mr. McCollum?
You know, what we're looking for in the application to VDOT, to do the, for the transportation alternatives funding, the funding is, is 80%, so we'd have to come up with the 20. And the, the 20% we believe we can do with engineering, labor, I mean, paying our own people to do it, and also some of the streets groups to do some pieces of it as well. This shows a picture, this is phase two that we're looking at, and it goes from Overhill to Shipley. The shared use path is, is 10 feet wide. It's set, set off from the edge of pavement, so there'll be a little, hopefully, we'll do a little bit of landscaping. The overall goal is to, is to be able to, let me see if I can get this done. Can you flip to the next one for me? Anyway, our overall goal is to, to get a shared use path or a sidewalk, so that you can go from Sugar Hollow Park all the way to downtown. And so there's some blocks that are, we've got the piece from Sugar Hollow to Old Airport Road, we've, we've got the piece from Alexis to Blevins Boulevard done, there's sidewalk then over to Clover Hill. We got funding a couple of years ago to do the piece from Clover to Overhill, which that, that we're in the process, we're doing the design now. We should be starting on that probably in the next year. And then we, with this application, we want to fund the, the next phase of that project. Like I say, ultimately, we want to be able to connect this to downtown. It may not be a shared use path all the way to downtown, but it'll be a combination of the shared use path or sidewalks. And again, we just need your resolution of support so that we can apply for this funding. Do you have any questions for me?
What was the total dollar amount of the 20%? What's that represent?
The, the estimate is in, in the range of $240,000. We may, there's a chance we may reduce that amount some if we do some of the curb and gutter through with maintenance money. We haven't decided, we're, we're getting ready to do some resurfacing on that road, and so we're trying to decide what, what works best for us in that, that area. So that funding amount could be reduced, we haven't settled in on it. But we believe that we can, in, the in-house portion is 20%. We believe we can do that with our own manpower.
So our 20% is $240, or that's included?
No, our, yeah, it'd be, what's that?
$48,000.
Thank you. $48,000.
That would be in kind.
It's in kind.
Okay. So this part of the plan is Phase Two. Would, would Phase Three be, I guess, the final phase, taking it, you mentioned Sugar Hollow and State Street?
We would break it off, we would go from, Phase Three would be from Shipley to Meadow Drive. Phase Four would be from Meadow to West Valley.
Okay.
And then we, we ultimately, again, want to continue on across, go up from where the CVS is to go up the hill, down to Martin Luther King. This just shows from where Phase One starts at Clover to Phase Four ending at West Valley.
So when would you know from VDOT that this is approved?
I believe it, it comes out in the fall, that we, that we know if we get the funding.
I think it's a neat idea. Anytime I've gone to a, a bigger city, whether it be Greenville, South Carolina, or Charlotte, or Asheville, or cities in Northern Virginia, you see, one of the things other cities are doing is they have a great downtown with places to eat, shop, and live, and, and we've got that. Another thing people like is, is stuff to do outdoors, and the idea of being able to say, you can essentially go anywhere in Bristol, from downtown to the other end of the city, which is Sugar Hollow, on a bike, or jogging, or walking, and that'd be, that'd be neat to have something like that through the city.
Yeah.
I mean, Abingdon has the Creeper Trail, Kingsport has the Green Belt, so I think companies and, and workers, people, you know, of all ages, but maybe especially young people, are looking for cities to live in where there's things to do, and I think this is just another tool in our toolbox.
Thank you.
All right. Any more questions?
Yeah, my, my question is, why are we skipping Phase One?
That, that's already funded.
Okay, that's already funded.
It's in design now, and we're going to be starting on that shortly.
Okay.
How many years, you think, to, to do three and four, and what you described, all the way to downtown?
Um.
Just like one project a year kind of thing? One project every two years?
Yeah, that's what we, if, if we felt like we could get the full funding for both Phases Three and Four in the same year, we would go for that. But they, they generally fund the smaller projects, and so that's why we're trying to keep it in small, bite-sized pieces, basically.
Are there any plans to give this shared use path some kind of name, and have any kind of signage, as far as, you know, this is how far you've ridden your bike, or how far you've jogged from one end to the other, or like a little map along the way, like some trails and paths have?
I mean, I think that's probably not a bad idea. We could, we could probably put signage up along the way, just to kind of give people an idea of how long they've gone. Maybe put milepost markers on it, just to give them an idea that way, too, and then you guys can come up with a name.
Puts pressure on us.
Yes.
All right. Any more questions?
But all, all the money's in kind, is, we don't have to buy concrete, we don't have to buy materials or anything, is that right?
No.
Okay. Go ahead and have the reading of the resolution.
Transportation Alternatives Project Endorsement Resolution, Lee Highway Shared Use Path-Phase Two, Overhill Road to Shipley Drive. Whereas in accordance with the Commonwealth Transportation Board Construction Allocation Procedures, it is necessary that a resolution be received from the sponsoring local jurisdiction or agency requesting the Virginia Department of Transportation, VDOT, to establish a transportation alternatives project in the city of Bristol. Now therefore be it resolved that the city requests the Commonwealth Transportation Board to establish a project for the construction of the Lee Highway Shared Use Path, Phase Two, a shared use path, and necessary drainage improvements on Lee Highway from Overhill Road to Shipley Drive. Be it further resolved that the city hereby agrees to provide a minimum 20% matching contribution for this project. Be it further resolved that the city hereby agrees to enter into a project administration agreement with VDOT and provide the necessary oversight to ensure the project is developed in accordance with all state and federal requirements for design, right-of-way acquisition, and construction of a federally funded transportation project. Be it further resolved that the city will be responsible for maintenance and operating costs of any facility constructed with transportation alternatives program funds, unless other arrangements have been made with VDOT. Be it further resolved that if the city subsequently elects to cancel this project, the city hereby agrees to reimburse VDOT for the total amount of costs expended by VDOT through the date VDOT is notified of such cancellation. The city also agrees to repay any funds previously reimbursed that are later deemed ineligible for federal highway administration. Be it further resolved that the council of the city of Bristol hereby grants authority for the city manager to apply for funds and execute project administration agreements, as well as other documents necessary for this project adopted on the 22nd day of October 2019.
Thank you. We had one person sign up to speak for this item, Mr. Pollard.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. Thank you for giving me this chance to speak, members of the council. I very much agree with the idea of walkability in the city. That's something that I've been pushing for, for some time. However, I do also want to emphasize the necessity to not just do things that make us feel good, but things that actually achieve their purpose. In this case, even though this is a small section, we need to make sure that the, the paths are actually walkable. In this case, I do see that there is a crosswalk mark on Overhill Road. There is no such crosswalk marked on Shipley Drive, and we need to make sure that that intersection is safe for pedestrians and other travelers. This being a shared use path, it's not necessarily just pedestrians, but we need to make sure that that is also a safe intersection. In this particular case, there are no, there's no need for signalized intersections, but that does need to be a marked crosswalk. And currently, it, at least in the, the drawing that was provided as part of the, the packet online, that intersection is not currently marked, and it does need to be marked in order to be safe for those who are using it.
That would be done. That's going to be done.
Okay. It's not marked that way on the?
It was just an oversight, yeah.
Okay. There, while it's not part of this particular thing at hand, there may be some other ones as well. I do know that, once you get to Valley Drive, that needs to be a signalized crosswalk in both directions.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pollard. Anyone else didn't sign up? Okay. At this time, I'll entertain a motion.
I move that we adopt the resolution as read.
Second.
All right. Have a motion, Councilman Farnham, seconded by Councilman Mumpower. Any discussion? I'll just add that I think this is good. We've had multiple discussions about particularly this stretch of road and, and making it accessible for pedestrians, but including the shared use path, I think is, is part of that comprehensive plan. It's good to see that part moving forward, but more importantly, it's good to see dealing with some of those issues we've talked about for a while, finding a way to solve it. So I think this is good. Wish we didn't have to phase it, and we can move forward a little quicker, but I understand why. So, all right. There's no further discussion. Clerk, call the roll.
Farnham?
Yes.
Mumpower?
Yes.
Wingard?
Yes.
Hartley?
Yes.
All right. Item number six, Resolution Authorizing Lease Purchase of Fire Department Equipment.
Make a motion, we table this item.
All right.
Second.
All right. We have a motion, Councilman Mumpower, to table, a second by Councilman Farnham. Clerk, call the roll.
Farnham?
Yes.
Mumpower?
Yes.
Wingard?
Yes.
Hartley?
Yes.
All right. Consent Agenda. What's the pleasure of counsel?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
All right.
Second.
All right. Have a motion by Councilman Farnham to approve the consent agenda, a second by Councilman Mumpower. Any discussion?
Yeah, I think we need to make a note of what's in the consent agenda. I mean, there's some pretty big dollars in here, and we talked about People's Inc., what they can do. One of the big dollars in here is what we're having to spend for inmate housing. I think it's like 80, 80-something thousand dollars.
Eighty-two.
Eighty-two thousand dollars for one month. Okay, so it's, it's, the budget's not nearly big enough to cover the run rate, so we budgeted, I think, I don't know, close to $900,000 or something.
Seven hundred thousand.
Seven hundred thousand and forty-nine or something. So we're, we're running at about a million-two rate or something like that right now, and we're not even, I mean, we haven't even seen maybe at peak, and so it's a problem. It's a big problem. It's a big problem financially for the city, it's a big problem just socially for the community and what's going on at the jail. We've got, this community has got to come together to look at this problem. It's got to be solved. We can't, it doesn't make sense to build another jail. I mean, what, what the heck would you do that for? You know, build a bigger jail, put more people in it? I mean, that's not going to work. And so we've got to do something, and spend another $80,000 in this consent agenda, just to take them and put them in the regional jail, because we don't have room for them, is what we're doing. So we're running out of room, and it's not just us, everybody's running out of room. Sullivan County's been in the news. I mean, it's, it's a nationwide problem. So there's got to be a social answer. What we've been, what we've been doing hasn't worked. It's not working. You know, we got, we got to figure out how to hold each other's hand, do something different. So People's Inc., you need to help us. It's a lot of money, and a lot of people are going to waste in, in that jail, and it's sad, because we didn't see this 30 years ago. We didn't see this 40 years ago. We didn't. I mean, there were people down there, but it wasn't to the extent of this problem. I mean, the families have fallen apart. Where's the church? Church wants to come in here on the casino, where's the church helping these families get back on their feet, right? Why don't they work on that and not worry about the other things? This, this is what we're dealing with. Everybody needs to look in the mirror. It's a big deal.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman Mumpower. And I would add to that, if anyone hasn't, I would encourage them to read the series the newspaper did, because they did a very good job talking about the issues behind all this. It's a very complex issue, they spend a lot of time, it's very in-depth, and as you pointed out, it's not just Bristol, it's a societal issue that a lot of places are dealing with. So I'd encourage people to read that, because it helps them be informed when we have these discussions as to, to some of the underlying causes. Any other discussion? I would point out that since we won't meet again until after, one of the items on the consent agenda is a street closure for the Veterans Day Parade. I would encourage individuals to come out and support our veterans. That's, unfortunately, I've noticed that the attendance for that parade is a little less than Christmas or Fourth of July, and I think they could use our support at the parade, so.
I would, I'd also add, we will be meeting next Tuesday for a called meeting at 6:00 PM. So I think y'all received notification of that previously, but we'll get that agenda out shortly.
Okay. All right. Nothing further. Clerk, please call the roll.
Farnham?
Yes.
Mumpower?
Yes.
Wingard?
Yes.
Hartley?
Yes.
No further business, we stand adjourned.[1763.76][1763.76](MUSIC)[1764.76]